Yeah, I told you.
Yeah.
The beach.
Of course, the hero we did. And then Andy went on to... Oh, thank you.
Okay.
I haven't seen this one.
You haven't? Oh, it's very familiar. It's just really... Of course, I saw it.
I've been working a little bit with this, you know, so I have no sense for not fishing.
I don't know. I'm right by the house. I help them.
I know. It's a capture. We have a capture with a timer. I'm at a lot, but I'll be here tomorrow night. Actually, if it goes really well, I'll play it through tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Too high? Up on that and so it... We blew it. And so it's back. That's not another one.
Okay. A little harder.
Here, um, can you?
So, great, so. You're correct. You guys just kept putting the weather thing in your question. My job is to do it.
Oh, yeah. 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 Yeah.
The storm service in this town actually is great for water. It moves up really good.
Yeah. Yeah. Chelsea? Yes. There is a significant car or shenanigans staff with my calls. So, thank you.
Who's nice pen is that?
Never gonna give my pen back. Put an eye on that. We're not just stealing. We need to write down all of the...
He's standing on our pile of papers up in the office this afternoon. He's grabbing over... And he reached out and he snatched that pen out. I'm like, yes.
My kids found them. It was like, what do you guys need pens for?
Well, the mistake on those, if you like grab a second, third one and you flick that little wax ball off, they dry out.
Yeah.
Yeah, they start, you start writing it.
I like carbon pencils, Josh. I need ten of them just to have one. It's like, can I have your other curtain? No, I need that. I need all of them.
Right before I got here, I was using one for his takeoffs and it just kept on halfway through riding. It dries out.
Oh, last meeting, I had one of these fancy Petro pens and they... Proper men, it's issued to me and I just have to look in my hand and I just give it. It's like...
I remember.
Yeah. All right, call meeting to order at six thirty. Go call, please.
Mary Casey Smith?
Here.
Janice Chodgen? Here. Sean Thomas? Here. Millie Shinover? Here. Mike Cantlin? Here. Josh Bennett? Here.
All right, we have a call. Motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I motion to approve the consent agenda as written. Second.
Open for comment?
I just had, I, I would, I'd move to change the consideration of resolutions and ordinances. I just want to move down Title sixteen one. If we change anything on Title sixteen, then it, it could interfere with CFI's lease.
You're talking about making the agenda, the agenda, not anything else.
Nothing, I just want to move along down.
If I had a pen, I would write that down.
Would you like it on the agenda?
Just, just move, if we take Title sixteen, seven ninety-three and just switch it with seven ninety-four.
Okay, perfect. All right. More comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll open it up for hearing from the public. There's a lot of ordinances and it's like there are two people in the room. Please dress with your name.
Yeah, my name is Andy Deering and I just have a quick comment here on noise in the city. And it has to do with the float planes. Last couple of years, I've noticed that float plane activity is increasing quite a bit. And, you know, we all put up with the noise, but the really early morning noise, I can, you know, it's pretty aggravating. Some of the float planes leave before seven o'clock, including, you know, on weekends, Saturdays and Sundays. And, you know, to make noise before seven, I mean, really before eight o'clock on Sunday morning when people are trying to sleep. And it's a lot of noise. I mean, it depends upon where you live in town. I don't know if you guys are noticing it or not, but if, if, if I'm asleep, it wakes me up. And, um, I've talked a little bit with people who are responsible. And, you know, they, they're trying to make an eight AM connection over Ketchikan. And so I understand what they're trying to do. But, you know, with the increase in tourism here in town, I think it's probably time for, I mean, we can look forward to a lot more of this sort of thing. And maybe it's time to sort of put some sideboards on how we want our quality of life here in town to be affected by the increase in, in activity. Because, yeah, revenue, you know, it's a big, it's a big deal, revenue for the city and revenue for people in town. But, you know, you got to factor in quality of life too. And if, I've lived in places where the air traffic was extreme, like the float plane traffic was extreme, like in Juneau, downtown Juneau. And it's not the kind of thing I want to, I want to be in. And I, I don't think I'm below that. Is there an ordinance, does anybody know, is there a noise ordinance that says you can't make a lot of noise before eight AM or seven AM or how? Anybody or her?
I mean, I'm, I'm pretty sure if I ran my chainsaw at six fifty-two on a Sunday morning in town, I'd have like maybe cheaply knock on my door, right? But it's basically the same thing.
I believe we do have a noise ordinance. I'm not sure what it actually states. I believe there was complaints about somebody running a mill or some, at one point in time. But, living here for forty years, I'm used to the float planes coming in daily, hourly. Nowadays, I'm surprised if I see one or two of them though. But, we'll look into the noise ordinance and, and, uh, maybe post that on the website.
That's hard, Janice, to reach out to you. Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. Any more hearing from the public? Mr. Kirk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Clinton Cook. I'm here with Craig Travis. I'm also, for real people, people don't know, I serve as a vice president of Clinton Haida Central, Central Council in Alaska. And there was a few questions during prior city council meetings about the tower. So, one of the questions was, has Title Network investigated a tower currently supplied AT&T right here adjacent to the Shantit office? And yes, the tower was built nineteen seventy-six. There's very, very strong concerns about its structural suitability. Furthermore, the tower is likely nearing end of its life within the next decade. And additionally, Title Network has a very hard time leasing space from these people that are owned by their towers. Another question was, has Title Network investigated NOAA across the street? Yes, they have. It's not suitable for similar carrier activities that would be provided to the community. And doesn't meet the coverage areas with its height? Another question asked was questioning the necessity of internet services demonstrated need. This tower will provide critical infrastructure for other tenants that can support first responders and improve carrier coverage. Further, our solutions will be the fifth generation one G option that can support higher speeds and will be offer a mobile solution in addition to the fixed solution that exists today like AT&T. The other question is, is Craig underserved in terms of internet access? And the answer is yes, it is. Approximately a hundred and forty people currently are underserved in the Craig area. Further, the only cellular carrier here is AT&T. The new tower will provide network internet access to those hundred and forty individuals as well as critical infrastructure for future cellular providers. Additionally, the tower will provide key infrastructure to support first responder communications located here in Craig, which we all know is the hub for all of our services on the island, from the troopers to the EMTs to our local PD. Another question I was asked, is this project intended only for tribal citizens? The answer is no. Title mission is not limited to tribal citizens. Our grant terms are provide fixed wireless broadband and wireless infrastructure to underserved and other underserved communities around and higher populated southeast of Alaska. This encompasses all individuals that live in the communities we preside in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Watson?
Yeah, I'd like to support CFI's amendments, you know, to make his application and his funding simpler. I think, you know, the city's been doing this long enough, we need a process that this thing can slide right in on because it, I, I can tell you right now that there's a number of boats here in town that wouldn't be fishing early in the season this year without that business being there. And it's, the closest place we've got to go is Rango. And usually this time of year, you can't get a spot in Rango. And, you know, he does, does good work and is very capable. We need it. It's, you know, we, we have a few anchors, you know, down there at Falls Island and, you know, with the, with the seafood processing plants and, and Petro. But certainly the ship services is, is huge. You know, we need somebody that can do critical work on boats. And, you know, we've got a pretty substantial fleet in town and, you know, a major fleet here in the summertime. And I just think that this will be a bonus to the town all the way around. I hope you guys give that consideration. And since I sat here long enough to read other parts of this, you're gonna have to listen to me. First, I see you're looking at a tourism committee. You might think about a commercial fishing committee because this winter, the tourism industry tried to shut us down at Board Fish. So, that's something to keep in the back of your mind. The other thing was the roadside vegetation. If you guys will look back, we did deal with this before. We, this has been on our plate several times. And we said, yes, we do want you, especially roadside, to look at other options besides herbicides. We said critical situations like the airport, you know, we made an exception for the airport because there are certain things they have to do there that, you know, that are life dependent. So, check back on our stuff. I'll let you, you'll find an ordinance in there that, that we did. You know, I can remember coming up a number of different times. And now that some of the most popular herbicides are cancer causes, you know, and we don't need any more cancer causes on this island. We got enough of them already. Anyway, I appreciate you listening to me and I hope you'll consider what I said. The most of us is missing me right now. See you later.
My name's Perry Wadley. I'm here in support of CFI's amendment on their lease. Me personally, last year, I had an engine that needed to be rebuilt on short notice. I had actually talked to the mechanic in Ketchikan that does the John Deere, and he refused to rebuild my engine. And so I'm not happy to mechanic here in town. There's not a lot of, you just can't go to Ketchikan, you just can't go to Rango, you just can't go to Sitka and go, oh, hey, I need my engine rebuilt. Because they take care of their guys first. Or they'll tell you no, because they, they don't have time. So, having the mechanic here, the boats in this area and on the island, it's huge that we have a mechanic available. So, so as I say, I'm in support of Craig's getting an amendment lease because it's important to the community.
Thank you.
And I'd like to speak on that, too. I've got my boat, this boat, six times, six years, four times I've had to go to Rango. Every time we have to go to Rango, that's another thousand to fifteen hundred dollars that we gotta spend to go back. When, when the other mechanic died, it left a big hole here. We had nowhere to go. We had no choice. And you can imagine what cost is if your engine's broken down, what the cost is gonna be to get your boat there because it's gonna have somebody tow you there. Now, everywhere in Alaska you go, southeast, where there's fishing boats, there's a place to work on their boats, except for here. And that's, that's a big hole in this community. Because a good percentage of, good percentage of us are fishermen here. And that's not including the charter guys or the canaries or, you know, all the other workers that have boats and motors to work on. That's what I have to say about it.
All right, thank you. Any more hearing from the public?
Well, I'll speak again, by the way, Mr. Mayor. I agree with former Mayor Watson about the tourism committee, ADFG committee that meets, depending on the season. We tend to meet more in the fall and winter, but it's dominated by the charter industry. And we all know what happened at Board of Fish Live in Ketchikan. They took three percent of our commercial fishermen's likely to hear in Craig and give to the sport charters. And that's not okay. And, um, you know, you have a troll or as your, on your city of Craig emblem, this time we took care of our commercial fishing fleet. And off that subject, I was at a city council meeting several months ago when you guys stopped putting out agendas because you said it was greener. And I asked for a public Wi-Fi access here so I could simply download the agenda and read what's going on. I sit here, that still hasn't happened. I'm sitting here underneath a cell tower and can't even download the agenda or read some of the articles that are present, that our community needs to focus on. And it'd be nice if we could have a public Wi-Fi here so we can read our, read our agenda on the phone like I, like I was asked to do at the meeting, A, use your device, read out your phone. Or it's great if you have internet, it doesn't work so great if you don't.
There might be an agenda right there on the table next to you.
I don't want to now. Yeah. But, um, also like to agree with Mr. Watson, we don't agree on a lot of things, but the herbicides gotta stop in our town. You know, you know what happens weekly here as it rains? You spray the, you spray the plants that poison heavy metals, feeds to our fish, feeds to the drains, feeds to our fish. There gotta be a better dependency to, to deal with the vegetation issue in our community and not, not poison. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Sorry.
Be my again.
All right. Any more hearing from the public?
I guess I'd like a comment on the, the spraying of the weed too is totally against that. I eat the berries in my yard. I don't spray around up around my house. It's cancer causing. Glycysate is hugely detrimental to people's health. Most people don't know that, but it, you know, they all say, oh, it doesn't do anything to humans. Well, it does damage to bacteria, it's chicken pathways is what it does. We're ninety percent bacteria. It does huge harm to your health. All of this stuff is. And even though the government still says it's okay, it's not. It's not good for you. And so, yeah, I'm against spraying for weeds too. And, uh, and I guess I would agree with Dennis on the survey and comment either. We lost three percent of our livelihood here. I wasn't making it before the three percent. And then we go to fishing this year and they dinged us again. We got no king salmon this year. So, yeah, I think we need to start paying attention to the trolls in our community that's here all the time, supporting this community full time, year round. Thank you. You listening again?
No, thank you. Yeah, the tourism committee came up when people didn't think they were too involved in the tourism and, um, commercial fishing would be great as well. They are, we are down to like seven percent of, you know, fishing industry and logging industry. So, yes, that's great recommendations. And Jan, Councilman, she, Trojan, she is the one who put the herbicide pesticide on there. So, all of the communities have spoke out throughout the years. Shoot, Alcat fifteen, twenty years ago, I don't think there, any of our views have changed on the pesticides and herbicides. And I thank you guys for your comments. Any more hearing from the public?
Mr. Mayor, very nice to see public here.
It is.
It is. It really is.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, move into consideration of resolution and ordinances. I am the POW property manager for Alaska Power and Telephone. And I will be recusing myself from ordinance seven ninety. And I'll be turning the meeting over in two minutes.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance seven ninety?
I move to approve the second reading of ordinance seven ninety authorizing negotiation of the sale of city owned property to cook in Haida Central Council.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Millie, I'd like to just say that, I've talked to Mr. Cook and my only objection is because the environmental pollution of the cell tower, really close to a lot of residences. So, I'll have to vote no on it. But I just wanted to say that I do support them getting the land. I support them having a tower, it's just not the location. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Any more comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I understand the interest in expanding communication and connectivity. That's, you know, something that's become a norm in our world today. But I would like to see other considerations for how to do this. You know, there's, there's land available right next to Shantit. It's a possibility where the Noah Tower is, it's city property. I understand totally that that tower is not appropriate. But I, you know, I would be interested in working with Title and seeing if that lot could be utilized for broader, you know, use rather than just Noah. And, you know, I also feel that the limited property that the city has puts us in a position of looking out for future needs. And that particular piece of property is adjacent to our schools and pool, which I see as, you know, education and recreation opportunities for future. So, my, my concern would be to try to utilize the properties we have most effectively and, you know, look for options to provide that service, but to do so in a way that's, um, consensus, I guess, would be my thought.
I have a comment. At that meeting, I attended that meeting. And from my understanding, it was from the recommendation of either the city planner or the city administrator that suggested that property, that they, they came to the city and asked what property could we put a tower on? And that property that was chosen was under the recommendation from this, our city staff. So, I don't understand why so many people are hung up on where it is when it, Brian, can you correct me if I'm wrong?
I can't. And I, I won't speak for the planner, but the conversations that I had, it was not a recommendation that that was a good place or that the city would be inclined to sell the property. The question was, is there that they could apply to purchase or lease that would be suitable for that use? That doesn't mean that the city staff endorsed a tower on that location, only helped them identify city owned property.
Right.
That some, that met their intended goals. So, it was not an endorsement by staff.
Well, I didn't, I didn't say that. It wasn't endorsement.
It wasn't a recommendation by staff. It was not a recommendation by staff that a tower should go there.
I'm talking about the property, that the property was for sale by the city of Craig.
That the property was owned by the city of Craig.
Okay.
Yes.
I seem to recall from that meeting, if my memory serves me right, I think somebody in the audience had asked if they had checked around for property available? And he said he didn't, it was not available.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question to Title? Who's in the galley?
Jer.
Uh, sorry, sorry, I forgot your name.
Jer.
Uh, if there was another site, how much do you think you, Clinton Haida would be out on surveying another location?
It, we have a, it's part of our propagation. It's an area that will serve when we put an antenna up for the area. So, it has to be in that field, but we definitely can look at another location if you have a location in particular that you could point out to us. Now, the site where the Noah Tower is, if that land was for sale, then that, that would still serve within that propagation area. And it would be a good location, but we'd have to purchase that section and put a tower. We could share location with Noah and, and actually it could be better served on our tower than what they have existing. So, that would be, you know, an option if that, if we could purchase that, that partial. But, okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing no, ready to vote?
Sean Thomas?
Yes.
Mike Cantlin?
No.
Millie Shinover?
Yes.
Josh Bennett?
Yes.
Jan?
No.
It's from me on the motion fails three to two. This is Madam Chairman, sorry. The motion fails three to two.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving on to ordinance seven ninety-four, CFI Industries LLC, amended, amendment to paragraph sixteen.
I motion to approve the second reading of ordinance seven ninety-four. Second.
Open for discussion.
Yeah, I would just like to defer with all we've heard about the, you know, the value of having Mr. Stanley and CFI business here, utilize the service. And besides the fishing fleet or our marine fleet, work from other, other businesses, you know, heavy equipment businesses and such are also done there. And so there's, there's a really broad service to our island community in addition to just the marine community. You know, I'm really want to see us continue to support the, you know, his business and his, his interests here because it's a tremendous benefit for our community.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I brought some information. Just, we all work here together and just want to give out a little bit of information. The first page is kind of what, an overview of what my agenda would be. The back, the next pages that precede this are gonna be my business plan. And what I would like to do with this property. The very last page is an image of, of what the property would look like once completed. And rewording the lease to, to allow for a purchase agreement to be negotiated prior to building the construction is, is the ask, basically. How to go about that, the best ways to proceed forward. I have a suggestion in paragraph two. Leasey petitions to purchase must include the plans for erection of the permanent industrial building on the property along with the evidence of financial resources to purchase the property. Therefore, you know, we're not, you know, I'm on the hook, the city's on the, the whole idea is that there's a commercial property and not a, a collection of junk or anything like that, that, that doesn't do any good for the profit, for the city and, you know, I'm not storing boats or anything like that. So, I'm open to discussion and, and changes and, and anything that you guys have in mind that might reward the lease to, to benefit both parties. Now, just do a suggestion. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, I had a question for Ivy. Are we talking... We're talking about Lot 7 on GT Brown? You can see it, if you guys go cycle through the APNT, you'll see the lots. This is Lot 7, isn't it?
Yeah.
And currently, the business just incorporates... Is it just the 91 feet? Or are you asking for the complete Lot 7 square feet?
No. So complete Lot 7A is 91 by 109. There's 41 feet of shipyard that's included in Lot 7A, and that is not included in my lease. That's not included in the ask.
Okay.
I just wanted to add, real quick, Mr. Mayor. Amendments to leases are complicated questions. Some of them are really low level, and we can either bring them directly to council for approval or make some change administratively if that makes sense. Some of them are significant changes to the terms. And so we like to follow the same process that we do for leases originally, which is an ordinance and a long public process. This one kind of right in the middle, just rose above that threshold. So I do want to point out that the recommended direction in the ordinance tonight is not only to authorize me to negotiate that, but to execute the language that's attached, which is the actual change to the lease. And that way, this lease would not have to come... This amendment would not have to come back to the council for final reading of terms later on. So I just want to be clear, that's a little bit different than we usually do. But again, it makes sense in this... In the case of this lease, to cut one more public council meeting out of the process. So approval of the ordinance as it's written tonight would authorize negotiation, but would also authorize me to execute the amendment to the lease.
So just to make sure I understand, what you're suggesting is that approval of the motion allows you to then work... Utilize or work with Mr. Stanley on the language that he's requesting?
Yeah. And if council has any specific changes, the language is included in the package.
Right.
So if the council has any specific recommended changes to it, I'm happy to hear those as well. Mr. Stanley and I can work through those before we execute the lease.
My only question is, since it's only a partial of Lot 7A, at some point in time, would that have to be replotted and resurfaced?
That would be a requirement prior to a sale.
Yeah.
More discussion?
Is there something that you feel could work for you?
I haven't read your answers. Yeah.
It's basically the same term, removing requirement for permanent building prior to the application to purchase.
Thank you, because I did not bring my glasses.
But I think it's essentially the language you proposed to Ivy.
Yes.
That's... Then yes. Might answer your question, yes.
Any more discussion? Move to a roll call vote, please.
Josh Bennett?
Yes.
Jan Schutzen?
Yes.
Millie Shunover?
Yes.
Mike Kempness?
Yes.
Shawna Thomas?
Yes.
All right, thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Moving on to ordinance 793, amend to Title 16.
I motion to approve the final reading of ordinance 793 to amend Title 16.
All right. Open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I had a couple items to discuss. If you guys had a chance, I know you probably didn't when it was sitting here when we got here. Before I make an amendment, amendments to Title 16, are you guys... I don't want to waste time. Are you guys seeing any reason to move forward? What suggestions?
They did not get it.
They didn't get it? Oh. Can we get a copy of this?
Yeah.
I did get your email note.
Sorry for my scribbles on there, guys. My hand notes. Would we need to move amend individually would be the best?
It's your choice. If the drawback of putting them all together is if somebody doesn't like one of the suggestions, then the whole amendment gets voted against. So I'll leave it to you, whichever way you want to do it, Josh. That's the drawback, the only drawback.
I believe 1603.70. I might be mistaken, but I have lots of experience with this subsurface rights around by Sea Alaska. And when you are dealing with, other than the subsurface rights, then the corporation, they have just as much right to charge you for usage, depending on how the property is laid out. I'm not sure how it's laid out through working through three of the... That goes back to not having looked at that. But like the soil, when I was at Quack Rock, Sea Alaska actually got like a $2 royalty. And then Quack, because they own the subsurface right. But since we were leasing from them, they requested one too, and we paid them both. But Sea Alaska does have subsurface rights to all...
That is currently in the code.
Yeah.
The subsurface, but I'm talking about the surface rights and everything above the subsurface. Because Sea Alaska is selling rock.
Yeah.
And there is a... I don't know. Those are...
But even if you bought a piece of property and you went to drill and shoot that rock and haul it so far off of your property, it would be... Yeah.
I move to amend 1604-02. And the revision as states, what I wrote here, the last sentence revision should say permits issued under the section shall be for such fees, such terms and conditions as the mayor and administrator determines appropriate. Currently, it's just administrator. I just feel that there would be an extra check in that. This is for temporary access permits.
You're looking for a second.
Second.
Open for discussion?
Yeah. It just adds mayor with along with administrator for temporary access permits.
All right. All those in favor?
I move to amend 1603-50. I would like to add, mayor or administrator may commence. This is for land sales negotiations.
Second.
The reason I wanted to add this is because one of the land sales from last year, the person wanting to purchase wanted to negotiate with the mayor. City code actually doesn't allow that. This would just fix a couple issues that we had last year.
I'm still trying to go through these individually and read the language compared to what's in our thing. So you're talking about 16.03.50?
50. It's under B.
Okay, B.
And the only thing I'm adding basically is mayor or administrator may commence negotiations, I think it says.
More discussion?
I'm still...
Sorry.
Still missing this, where it is. So you're just asking to add this language?
Asking to add mayor or administrator. So if the administrator's not in, then the mayor can step in and do negotiations. I believe it's on B. I can...
It is.
Yeah. So 1603.050B, the second line starts with the word administrator. I think Josh is suggesting to put mayor or in front of administrator, which would authorize the mayor to also participate in negotiations for that sense. Is that right, Josh?
Yeah.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
And we'll definitely... 1603.70 will definitely be contacted and attorney to figure out exactly where the verdict is. Because that's been a big question.
There's issues in the current Title 16. It does say that we can sell timber. There's a timber issue, but it needs to... We need to know.
Yeah. There's been two different opinions, and I haven't been here long enough to go on any of them. So definitely the...
I would suggest changes also, Franklin. There's suggestion to... On 16... 20B. Let me get there.
Mike, what's this under?
This is under city sale of city-owned land 16.03.
20 is... And you're in B?
My suggested wording changes on this, there's two. Presently, it reads, "When a public hearing reveals that a particular upland or tideland disposal may have significant and widespread public opposition." I would like to change the word opposition to interest. Opposition is negative. Interest is neutral. Interest can be positive or negative. And then to carry on further, I would like to continue that. The council may, as struck out, should have been suggested. And I would like to strike should and include must require approval of the disposal by the qualified voters of the city.
Is that a motion, Mike?
Yes, I would move that those two language changes be made.
Just a second.
Just to be clear, this is for any upland, tidelands?
Correct.
Anywhere. Or, you know, it doesn't have to do with the cantering point, but we're talking about...
That's correct.
We're everywhere.
Okay. It just gives people the opportunity to have a broader say in disposition if the community as a whole feels that way.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
More motions? Correction to Title 16? Motion to accept some amendments as suggested?
Back to the original motion with all the...
Since I did that one? Did I do it? I don't?
No.
Oh, God, thank God. Do you need a motion to...
No, the motion's already on the floor. All of the amendments have been made. The vote now...
Roll call vote, please, Chelsea.
Yeah. Vote is on the motion with the amendment to the pass.
Millie?
Yes.
Josh Bennett?
Yes.
Shawna Thomas?
Yes.
Jan Schutzen?
Yes.
Mike Kempness?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank the council members and the members of the public that sat on the Title 16 committee and spent a lot of time going through this, and Ivy for all the work that she did with the committee in putting this together to bring back to the council. It's a big deal to go through a revision of an entire chapter in the municipal code. So everybody did a great job.
Thank you.
Good job, Ivy, especially just getting here.
There's a few more we need to iron out, but yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I have something about that ordinance. I know it's not in order, but could you guys change it at the end? Or does it have to go back to public hearing to put all these changes in? Because I had an ordinance that we were changing in the square footage and it got tossed out. And it's all over. If you guys are changing subjects of an ordinance, I think it should go back to the public and put it back on to starting at Block 1. Just a question, but...
The amendments, can I have them ordered? They were... I mean, it's the second reading, so... And yeah. Good question.
It is a good question, because the substance of the ordinance that the public seen has been changed and diluted. Craig, I got an ordinance and the square footage is wrong. I was forced to start the ordinance over. I believe you changed enough in this reading to make it go back to the public. We gave the mayor power to negotiate. I know I'm on order, but just a question.
Just like your property, Mr. Lee's had the same thing. He did a major change on his ordinance, so it actually went out to the public. We did the same process with Mr. Lee's property. We had the same hearings and the same process. So thank you for your concerns. We'll move on to Resolution 2509, adopting harbor rates.
I move to adopt Resolution 2509, city of Craig Harbor. Fee schedule effective 7/1/25. Second.
Open for discussion. All good?
Sorry, I was getting there.
Okay, perfect.
The Title 16 is huge, so if you go too fast on the screen...
Well, if you hit back to the agenda, then hit...
Well, if you hit back to the agenda, then hit the square. It'll take you right to every time you want to go to each item.
Oh, but I'm on the.
Oh, no. Yeah. Oh, yeah, it's got the links there. Where it says back to top in the square at the bottom of the page. Just scroll up a little bit. No, no, scroll up a little bit. See where it says back to top.
Now press on the item that you want to go back to.
You're gonna realize this is.
There you go. It's magic.
Someone make a motion?
Yeah, yes, first and second. Open for discussion.
I, I think the only thing on this is. I wish we could, but this is a budget thing, but we need to start getting on par with the harbor water sewer and getting to where we're somewhere, not breaking even, but like at least forty, fifty percent of not losing sixty or eighty. So this, I think this is a good thing.
I'm sure we're, you know, we've been here a while in one capacity or another, and we've been behind a lot of our things, and basically we're subsidizing the general fund, which takes away other opportunities. You know, as tough as it is, you, at the end of the day, you really have to pay for those.
We're happy to bring that note back to the Budget Committee beginning of next year's budget discussion.
I just have one question. They, I think a couple meetings ago, we talked about if Port Saint Nick residents were considered local or not. What did the, what was the?
I haven't brought that to the council yet, Sean.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is just for the little board.
Oh, okay.
Folks, we were trying to get the, the budget passed.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mike Kipnis?
Yes.
Sean Thomas?
Yes.
Millie Shinever?
Yes.
Josh Bennett?
Yes.
Janis Troschek?
Yes.
Moving on, thank you, council. Moving on to resolution twenty five ten, establishing a Tourism Advisory Committee. Move to approve resolution twenty five ten.
Second.
Open for discussion.
This was really brought to basically when the access permits and stuff like that coming out, no matter, we're busy this time of year, no matter what public notice and stuff like that, it's really not enough. So having everybody involved and feel like they have a say in what's going on in our community is going to be huge. And if it's a commercial fishing fleet, if it's a, you know, timber, or, or, you know, mining, or, or tourism, I commend anybody who comes and sits on these boards and, you know, puts their time in for their community, so.
Yeah, yeah, I, I support this. I do understand the concern, you know, that there's broader different visions and resource utilization between tourism industries, border, and commercial. But I still think that, you know, we, we need to look for a little broader guidance and input from our community as a whole. And, and I do have confidence in our community that we will see, we have the balance, I believe, being that everybody lives here, they recognize the value of all of our industries, and, and they can find the, you know, they can find the avenues to make all of that work together. I, I do believe it's, uh, it's in our interest to do this and, and get input from the community as a whole. Thank you.
I agree. That we should have the public control.
And just because we're having an advisory committee does not mean we're promoting it or not promoting it. It just gives everybody in the community to have a voice, to show up in meetings and, so.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Janis Troschek?
Yes.
Mike Kipnis?
Yes.
Josh Bennett?
Yes.
Sean Thomas?
Yes.
Millie Shinever?
Yes.
Thank you, council. We'll start advertising for Tourism Advisory Committee members.
Moving to resolution twenty five eleven, supporting management of roadside vegetation without the use of herbicides, pesticides, or spray of the fornits.
Move to adopt. Second.
Open for discussion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, initially, when I read it, it sounded a little bit soft. And for the fact the way it's worded, they've already had a public forum on it, and they can just think that it's carte blanche, we could go ahead and put spray and pesticides. And I didn't know I had as much support as I did with the mayor, Mr. Cook, and, ooh, eyeliner. Thank you, Harriet. Anyway, I'd like to see it maybe closer worded, more strongly to, to our last ordinance. Just, this is saying that we just want to have one hearing, but I'd really like it if the city said, we really don't want to have pesticides in this city. Ever. Thank you.
Would it be quite a, use the last verbiage out of the last resolution that was passed to came against herbicide pesticides or?
This is largely the last.
Largely.
So if, if you want some different language, couple of options. One is, if you have some language now that you want to propose as an amendment, that would be one way to change the resolution. If you don't have language ready now, it might be easier to postpone, for someone to make a motion to postpone until the next council meeting, and then you and I can get together and talk about the stronger language that you want to see, and we can bring the resolution back to the council with stronger language, if that's what you're looking for. So if you have language ready tonight, you're certainly welcome to propose an amendment.
I'm not ready tonight.
Yeah, okay. Request could be required, looking at it, you know, because instead of requesting, we require, but yeah. So a motion to postpone this item to the July seventeenth council meeting would be in order.
Can I do that? Okay. Can I motion to postpone until the next council meeting and all of my ducks in the rough?
Second.
Discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you so much.
Which is when?
July seventeen.
Seventeen.
I got one in July and one in August.
July, one on the birthday. You want to drop by sometime, because next week we can sit down and hammer up some language.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, council. Moving to resolution twenty five twelve, amending the City of Craig's pay classification schedule.
Move to adopt. Second.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there was a slightly updated copy put in your places tonight. The, the corrections were minor. There was two calculation corrections. If you look at the grade four wages and the grade seven wages, the grade four wage, the bottom wage miscalculation was an odd number. And on grade seven, there was about a ten cent difference in the calculation. So those are the only two changes between the one in the packet and the one that's in front of you. Uh, largely, this is a housekeeping item. We do this every year in order to incorporate the approved cost of living increase into the, the classification schedule for the city.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Millie Shinever?
Yes.
Janis Troschek?
Yes.
Josh Bennett?
Yes.
Sean Thomas?
Yes.
Mike Kipnis?
Yes.
Council, moving to new bid, business property tax extension discussion.
And now if we look at the formal action tonight, the council, the last meeting, it wanted to talk, had some suggestions about the increasing property tax values and how to handle it. I have been exploring this particular option for a while, and I just wanted to provide a memo to the council. It really outlines the property tax process. If the council's interested in moving forward and considering the permanent resident property tax exemption, it would need to go on the ballot in October. And so one of the reasons that I try to get this to you now is I don't want to get too close to October and have to work through a process to put something on the ballot. So if the council's interested in that, I can devote some staff time to calculating some numbers. I, I will say that while the, the permanent resident exemption would provide property tax relief to some local residents, it at the same time would universally increase property tax rates for businesses, whether they are locally owned or not, and would increase property tax rates for rental units. So whether the rental unit is occupied by a local resident, if they're not the owner, then those rental units are also, the higher tax rate would be applied. So it would provide a benefit for some residents, but it would have a negative impact on some businesses and other residents. It would have the effect of applying a higher tax rate to non-residents. So.
Mr. Mayor, everything the administrator said, I don't like. Just to be honest, the, the issue the state has with the PFD to say who's, who's here and who's not here is, is broken. If we did go down that, I hope it's more of a two-thirds instead of a half on the days. I think this, this puts way more pressure on, is Josh actually here so many days a year? Where's the checks and balances to find out if I'm actually here this much? The renters, unfortunately, they're renting for a reason, and if their tax, their, their income or their rental payment monthly is going to go up because the, the property tax burden's going to go up. I, I would be more interested in maybe a depreciation on maybe improvements that property tax homeowners, business owners due to their, their, their structures for their property, where it could depreciate out five to 10 years, where they can show that they've put money into their, their property or business. This is, I, I believe with this, it's, it's a good, it's good work, but it's just too much stress on staff, I believe, with tracking down who is, who's where and how long you've been here.
I agree with that. I won't disagree with Josh there. It is a lot more work for staff. Yeah, on Airbnb, you know, you rented them out of state, and you see the luxury taxes that we're not charging here. And so that's a simple way to, you know, incorporate money, revenue for the city is, you know, I know a lot of people don't like the $10 bed tax and stuff like that, but the whole thing is if you're going to Airbnb your house, you're not going to rent it out to the public, then why not have some revenue from it, you know? But, yeah, this is, this is hard, and property tax is hard to do because, you know, people, cost of living goes up, or wages don't follow the cost of living, then they're going to tax the people who live here out of being able to live here anymore. So, I agree. But you did a great job on, you know, there's three different options. Yeah, yeah. I seem to recall in my leisure time reading of Alaska statutes that there may be an optional exemption option that does tie to increases in value or depreciation of improvements. I'd have to go back to Title twenty nine. One of the things about property tax exemptions is municipalities' hands are really tied.
It's just a dirty work. It's more work.
And, well, it is.
Yeah.
But there's very few, it's, there are a lot of good ideas for different types, different ways to exempt property, but unless it's allowed by Alaska law, we, we really can't. So, yeah, depreciation would be another one that would, would certainly require a lot of work, a lot of staff time. The simplest solution, as I point out in the memo, is that the council pick a target revenue each year and simply adjust the mill rate up or down in order to meet that revenue. That, that, that gives the council some control over increasing values and the, and the associated taxes, but it doesn't have any benefit in terms of resident homeowners versus non-resident homeowners, or commercial versus residential properties. It would simply apply a lower or higher tax rate all across the board. But that is the simplest. I mean, that's, that's really simple to look at what the potential property tax revenue is for the year and reduce that revenue projection by some amount that the Budget Committee would decide. And then the council would simply adjust the tax rate for that tax year in order to make it happen, right? And it's not uncommon. It's, the math, the math, if you do it all by hand, is difficult, but there are municipalities that do that down to the hundredth of a mill, right? So you see municipalities that have eight, eight point three six two mill property tax rate, right? That's what computers are for now. So that one is not a lot more work on staff. So if that's, if that means what the council's kind of wanted to consider in terms of property tax, that's, that's a process we can just implement through the normal budget process.
Yeah, all good.
I think that's what Mike had mentioned during the last of the Budget Committee, because if we, when we get to the committee and we start, we have those numbers, you project them out. If we can see a half below what we're currently at, maybe a half above, and then we can just go from there and hope that when May comes, the rest of the council follows suit. That's, all these other things, I think, is just too much work.
Yeah, this is staff-wise, that's the one I like the best.
Right.
Staff-wise, that's the one I like the best. I was just trying to put something forward that solves some other comments and concerns that the community has had about outside interests in increasing property values based on purchase prices. There's no more comments. I'm, I'm happy to take that. We'll come back to the Budget Committee next year with projected numbers and what increase or decrease to the tax rate would, would result in.
Founder? Thank you. Moving to council members participation in voting discussion.
I don't think it's a big deal. I just pointed it out there because when I was council, one time I was tossed as to the answer, and Dennis said he has to vote. And so I just thought the only reason I threw it out there. Do you keep seeing Congress, everyone just puts questions?
Nothing yet has been chance corrected. It is an Alaska state statute that council members are required to vote on all items that are not legally excused.
Any more discussion?
No.
All right, thank you. The appropriation of January through March two thousand twenty five Sales Tax Fund for Craig City School District.
I move to approve the appropriation of seventy thousand four hundred twenty eight dollars and nine four cents for the Q one sales tax revenues of Craig City School District.
Okay.
Open for discussion. Roll call vote?
Oh, no, that as long as the payments are, they have a set date, and Jackie doesn't have to deal with the ask every time.
So the only reason that this is in front of the council is because the first quarter was not included in either fiscal year budget.
Yeah.
So I need the council to appropriate that money so we can send the checks.
Yeah, no, I get it.
The rest of the quarters for this year are already in the budget. And so on those months, and we've already pretty much laid out that they will see a payment a month, in the month following the due date of quarterly reports. And those won't come back to the council until next budget year.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Sean?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
All right, thank you, council.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask one question?
Yes.
So this, as in Jackie's words, best interests of transparency, efficiency, and public trust, those numbers aren't going to be for public to see what they voted on to send to the school monthly?
I don't know that there's a plan to post it anywhere, but it's public information. It's a total amount. Yeah, anybody can ask how much it was on a quarterly or annual basis. It's a, it doesn't identify any one business's.
No, no, I'm just interested in.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to think it through.
What the voters voted for to see if it's working.
Yeah.
Yeah, see if, if, if this was.
It's, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to have staff publish it even if.
Yeah, they, everyone voted on it. I'd, I'd hope that the school sees a benefit.
Yeah, and Arkowski put out SRS payments on the floor again, so.
Did everybody cross their fingers?
Yeah, everybody crossed their fingers.
It will still be, my guess would be two years before we see another SRS. It will still be, my guess would be two years before we see another SRS payment. But if the House will pass it, that will be, that'd be a godsend.
All right. Moving on to sales agreement, Lot 6, J K Brown subdivision, City of Craig, Alaska Power and Telephone. I will recuse my cell for, since I'm associated with Alaska Power and telephone, you're the property manager, and I will move the meeting back over to Mrs. Chair, Millie's team over.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt the Alaska power and telephone land sales agreement?
I move to approve the terms of the land sale to APNT at J K subdivision. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion?
Mrs. Mayor, I had a question for the property manager. The previous property manager stated, when he sat here, that our rates would go lower if APNT could purchase this property. How does that actually factor in after they spend, supposedly, we've spent $115,000? Will we actually see an adjusted rate? Or could APNT adjust our rate per community instead of spreading the load out when, you know, we're on hydro, but the other communities are generator and we pay for everything? Will our community benefit from the sale?
Everybody benefits, nobody, it is a regulated cost that the power company makes. It's like a seven, they don't make any more, it's regulated by Alaska Energy Authority. So if land leases, you know, every 10 years you're buying a piece of property, that goes on to the rate case. And so the rate case is your KW burns. So basically, we don't make any more money off of any power that we sell, and energy is basically regulated throughout the whole state. Some people have a dollar kilowatt hour, some people have 10 cents, so they basically make it blend in there to where everybody could afford to keep their lights on. So every 10 years, if you're leasing a piece of property, you should have purchased it. And so that goes to the rate cases. And so if you do own your piece of property every 10 years, you know, you, that will lower the cost, you know, of operations. So, that answers your question?
Kind of, 10 years?
It is, yeah, yeah, it's not a, it's not a regulated cost.
Okay.
So, I mean, we, it's, it's regulated, everything that costs to do power gets associated into the cost of kilowatt hours. You know, Blackberry's nine cents, Southport's six cents, Diesel might be 30 cents, 40 cents, H G might be 30 cents, and then depending on kilowatt hours burned, it's adjusted through your, through your rate. But the lower it is for easements and stuff like that, it's a, it's factored into the cost of the own business. Be like, you maybe not charge the first kill softly or the cost of your tools, like that.
So my question is, in the past, when I was on council, City of Craig aggressively would get a lawyer when the rate changes, when they wanted to increase on Prince of Wales. And so there was always heartburn for the City of Craig. And how I feel from it is that Heineberg has the newest generator, and they get lots of power and they're up in five minutes. But typically, Craig is without power for a half an hour. And so I was, it kind of relates to this thing that I feel like Craig gets, you know, treated raw with APNT.
Okay, so I can answer that. So basically, we have communities that auto restore as soon as the lights go out, and it does not see a fault in that community, it will turn that generator on. Craig is a manually mounted whack. We have an on-call rotation where we have to be within the powerhouse by 30 minutes. And so I literally leave my house, I fire up Craig, and then I restore power there so I can run the grid. I do not turn the lights on until my line crew calls me up and says, "We are in clear." Somebody has not wrecked their rig into a telephone pole or something like that, and they have driven the lines, and actually, we know where the faults are. I could run all of POW from my laptop. Craig does not auto restore, so we do show up there, we auto restore, and if the fault has hit Craig, it's in our vicinity of Craig. So it all depends on where the fault is and then the safety of the crew and the public. We do a very stringent call-out request to make sure everybody's in clear before we turn the power back on. So sometimes it could be a half hour, sometimes you might be out for two hours, depending on, on, you know, where they actually outage at. Sometimes Craig comes on waiting for Kwak because the wreck is over by Hollis, in between Hollis and Kwak. Sometimes Thorn Bay and Cassan are out of power, and South Side Thorn Bay is out of power, Cassan has power, City of Thorn Bay has power, so, so on and so forth. So it really depends on where the faults are. But we know we're doing good, I'm sorry, we know we're doing good when we're only out for a half hour.
So what do we have to do to get on the auto? Wouldn't that be more efficient?
More just for.
If we were auto?
If we were auto, yes, it comes with automation, and which comes with more expenditures of, of, you know, upgrading your system within. We've upgraded most of them, Craig and Craig is, I think, the one that is not automated, but is one of the, it was one of the main systems. We can, you know, start the generators by click of our button, but if we have an outage, it's a lot of the times, you know, in between Craig and Kwak, could be a legal hit to lines or something like that. But I totally, it would save us money in the long run for paying metering down to fire up the generator, be there for a few hours at a time. But yes, it's, and I love this discussion because I can bring this to, to APNT and be, you know, President Craig, move on automation, so.
I have a question, and might be dumb question. Is this land that's already being leased that they want to buy? Or this is just a new piece of property that they want, that APD wants to buy?
This is where the current substation on Falls Island is. There's, we've upgraded, have two generators there. Silver Bay is going to be running three mags of power this year. So we have to basically create, make more generation, and we ended up adding a major diesel down there last year. And the infrastructure's never going to go away, it's going to, it's going to be there for, until we have power to keep all the big customers on and all, everybody on the island on.
Just because they always ask every other person that wants to buy a property, is this why can't APNT lease the property?
It has been leased, it was just a request from APNT. I believe they've requested it just like throughout the years, and this is the first time that it's been, that it's been considered.
First time that it's gotten passed an ordinance to negotiate it.
Right, right.
It's been considered at least.
Yeah, it's been considered, but the first time it's made up to, yeah.
That's correct.
Mr. Mayor, I guess my concern is we've had numerous citizens come and plead with us not to sell any more city property because we don't have that many parcels left. Just saying.
It's not bigger than the fence, is it? Is that the little, right behind the car wash, that little place?
Yeah, it's on, there's a, yeah, and I'm not the mayor right now.
I don't think that the. Mrs. Mayor? There might be a foot or two on corners, but I think the fence largely outlines the property.
Oh, okay. It's buttoned up against the road.
Yeah, that's, that's why they walk the road, so you have to. Lots of. Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question for Administration.
Cool.
So in Title 16, did I read it right? The council couldn't, cannot decrease the ask, but it can increase?
The Title 16 requirement is that sales, market value sales are sold at a minimum of the market value based on the recent appraisal. So the council, short of it is, the council may increase the price above the appraisal, but cannot decrease it below the appraisal by code.
Okay, that's what I thought.
In regards to the city not selling land, I think there is, I know there's strong community feeling like that. But I also feel like undeveloped properties that have, you know, long-term implications and standing for the community, we have provided that consideration, doesn't even have to, but we have provided that consideration. You know, Kenny Quitley, we've sold land to him now for his developments, his history, his business developments. And I, you know, on this particular issue, every issue is different, but on this particular issue, I don't see us going out there, you know, next year saying, "APNT, you gotta go." So I, you know, I think this is a, basically a partnership between, you know, a very major business on our island and a necessary business in our community. In this particular situation, I am comfortable with this.
Any further discussion?
One thing, Mr. Mayor, may I? After hearing from the property manager and the previous mayor, I believe the ask is personally too, too low. I, I feel that they, they want it, they can pay for it. I think we could add 20 to 30%, and I think they would still be buying personally.
Yes.
In regards to that, I agree with that totally. I believe not, Brian, did we not have a council member C in the past suggested just adding an automatic 10 or 15 or 20% or something?
There's at least one land sale that I recall that he did that even as early as the ordinance approval. So we had that going in through the negotiations, but that's certainly within the council's purview. So Josh, an amendment, if you want to make it an amendment to either give me a dollar value or give me a percentage and all, calculate the dollar value would be.
Yeah.
Appropriate here.
Yeah, so 30% gets you right at 150, 325, 50 cents. I move to amend the value of the praise land for purchase and it would, to the value of $150,325.50, which is a 30% increase.
And how many cents?
50.
One second.
Any further discussion?
I, you know, I just want to say why I believe that. I, we don't have, if you took a similar piece of property on Prince of Wales, in Craig, Prince of Wales, anywhere on this island, and compared it to a similar piece of commercial property in Ketchikan, there would be vast differences in the values of them. And I, what I believe is, and this is something that Council Member C was adamant about, is we don't have a broad enough base of commercial activity and commercial land sales here to reflect a, you know, the reality of what value a piece of property is. And I, I think he was right, I, I believe this is a, you know, not a reasonable ask. So that's my basis for supporting this.
Any more discussion? Hearing, now roll call vote.
Janice?
Yes.
Josh?
No.
This is a vote on the amendment.
Oh, an amendment? Yes. My amendment, my amendment, yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Shawna?
Yes.
Now we're back.
I got a vote.
Oh, main motion, right?
Yes, ma'am, has amended.
Has amended.
Josh?
I, I'm in. I'm in no.
Mike?
Yes.
Shawna?
No.
Janice?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion fails three to two.
Thank you for your time and consideration. Moving on to Public Works Department on-call rate change discussion.
Move to approve the stat on the on-call rate for the public works to $6 an hour effective January, or July 1st, 2025.
Second?
Mr. Mayor, I had a question. Could, could you explain to me who is eligible for the $6 an hour increase on-call? How, how, how this works? If I'm sitting at home and I live in Kwak Lake, do I get $6 an hour on-call when it takes me 15, 20 minutes to get here?
Yeah, go ahead, Brian. I mean, it's not a $6 increase, it's a $6 total.
$6 total?
Yeah, yeah, not a $6.
There are, and I don't have the personal handbook in front of me, but there are a list of restrictions for on-call. So it has to be for verified reasons for on-call. It's not just having somebody available or somebody who might respond, so. And there are restrictions on how far away you are in response time.
Because currently, there's a couple employees that live well outside the city limits who have rights to the city vehicles. And my view, this is my view, that on-call workers should, that, when you're on call, that's when you should be allowed to have a city vehicle because you got to get there. And that means that you, you're able to this wage. So I feel this $6 is great, but there needs to be a process where there's a boundary. You can't be so far out and be making $6 on-call, you can't get there.
I believe that's in current person.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Millie?
Yes.
Shawna?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
All right, we're down for, for council comments.
Mr. Mayor? This seems to be an issue every year, especially around corners. Like I, as a local person, when I go down this hill because of the brush, and there's a beautiful tree, you know, she's got it really beautified there, I know to slow down. But I've been coming, like, from Dixon Brown when people come flying down there. And that crosswalk is right there. So for our public works, we need to make sure that, especially on our busy streets where everything is overgrown, you've got to pull out past the stop signs in order to see if there's incoming traffic. And second of all, being how, we're not going to have a meeting on July 3rd and not have a meeting till the 17th. I would like to wish all of you a happy, safe Fourth of July.
And I agree with your comments. There's, you drive around town, and there's quite a few places that the trees are obstructing.
Yep.
Your view, even at some of the yield signs and stop signs and.
Well, our kids are on school right now.
Oh.
And some of them do not look. Most of them do.
Who's, is it the state's responsibility to do the crosswalk there, or is that the city? I know, where do they end? Because they striped, it looks great.
Top of the hill.
So the top of the hill. So I wonder if we need to ask them to stripe out the crosswalk at the end, where Millie is concerned, it's washed out.
Yeah, they did the one at, I don't know, Andy Betty's a few years back.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I did have just one thing, and it is in my wonderful notes and great handwriting on here. Mr. Cook has mentioned this twice. Is there a possibility where we can get a mesh router that has the library service down here?
We have it, we just need to go through, we either need to put more copies of stuff out or post, post to the public. We, we have a Wi-Fi router in the building that we can allow the public.
Just open up, okay, okay. Because I know they're open, but, so we could get service in here.
Perfect.
Mr. Mayor, I had a comment about Fourth of July. I know in the past that the Fourth of July committee has asked the council for help, and I have not seen anything, any posting or any email. I didn't know if we were, I thought I had to ask.
I think we've offered, and I think they've taken us upon help. I'm not sure what's, if anything's not getting done that they've asked for. I've had numerous staff, people meet with them and I think they communicate regularly with staff on up posting stuff in Public Works for assistance at the ballpark and recreation.
Specifically, I thought they asked the council for help at one point.